All right, it is 6:15 PM. We're going to call this workshop session of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. Microphones up there can hear everything in the far corners of the room, so please be aware. First up, we have discussion of consent and regular agenda items. So council, we're going to go ahead and go through the agenda right now. I've got William, I've got you for invocation. And Bob, I've got you for the pledges. We have C1, announcement of our Color Palooza logo contest winner and unveiling of the D1, public hearing, ordinance amending Article 3, Chapter 6, zoning petitions and procedures, Volume 2. Questions on this one? Item D2, public hearing, consideration of ordinance, repealing ordinance number 0129-19-SUP. That's terminating that existing SUP. And then item 3, kind of bookends that, granting a new special use permit for that area. Public hearing, item 4, consideration of ordinance granting a zone change from LI to HI, and from HI to LI. Item 5, ordinance granting an SUP for accessory building, rock, rock, plates. This is going to patch patio covers for the townhomes. Next up, consent agenda, item 6, approval of minutes. Item 7, professional services agreement with Burkhoff, Hendricks, and Carter. And that's for East Main Street Railroad sanitary sewer replacement. 8, agreement between the city and Haff and Associates for landscape, architecture, and engineering design for the Vista Ridge Park and the Vista Ridge Amphitheater.
Can't wait to get that going.
Yeah. Item 9, interlocal agreement between Denton County MHMR and the City of Louisville. Item 10, interlocal cooperation agreement with Denton County, Texas regarding funding of design right away and construction for McKenzie-Hembray neighborhood rehabilitation 11, fire protection and emergency ambulance services, interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County and the city. Item 12, consideration of an alternative standard related to architectural standards of the I-35E corridor overlay, the Dollar Theater.
I have some concerns about that, but I'll talk about it.
You want to do that?
I do have one quick question. And Rich, I apologize, I shouldn't have asked you about this beforehand, but I was trying to figure out the height elevations, if there's any difference in elevation between the two buildings. It looks like the warehouses might be actually smaller height-wise than what's out there right now for the movie theaters. Is that, you know, off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, I believe it is, yeah, not quite as tall as the movie theater. I can verify that.
Okay. I apologize. You tried to...
Hello. We're Price Hopper, the Gray House Properties, the ownership group. The existing movie theater is roughly 40 feet at the top of the roof, and then the canopy on top is about 62 feet. Top of our building would be 37. So anywhere from 10 to 30 feet lower.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Mayor, I know, I think we're going to have some robust discussion out in open about this, but I did want to have an opportunity for Richard to explain, kind of, I know there's some adjacency issues, but what staff was trying to achieve with their support of this.
Okay. Thank you, Claire. Staff has been working with the owner and several different developers on this site, and yet it has had the L.A. zoning. So warehouse distribution is a use allowed by right. So that was kind of the number one factor on this. But again, we're very cognizant of the very sensitive uses of the residential so nearby, the retail across the street. So very early on, when we started working with the owner, over three years ago, and there was a lot of issues since that theater went dark, there was a bit of litany of problems, vandalism, and breaking in, and criminal activity. So we've worked very closely with fire department, and with fire marshal, and PD to continue continuous mitigation. So it's been really an ongoing problem. And like I said, the owner came to us with, like I said, several different developers, and we knew it was probably inevitable that warehouse distribution, since that is such a high-demand use right now. And it was very clear at that point that, you know, we had basically two pathways. One, large building on the side of probably about 120,000 square feet, which would be, tends to attract larger users with more trucks and more impacts. Two smaller buildings, we thought would help bring the scale down a little bit, a 37,000 square foot building and a 68,000. And very early on, we, you know, we made it clear that if two smaller buildings were going to be built, we would work with them to kind of come up with the best possible package and even entertain some alternative standards. So there was really some give and take on both sides. One of the items I wanted to point out is the fact that the overlay does not require any windows on the street-facing facade. And we've got, they've even surpassed the requirement for windows. There's a 40% window coverage for buildings that front I-35 Furniture Road or an arterial street. Oak Bend is a collector, so they were not required. But I believe that it's probably close to about 60, 70% windows across the front. So the applicant and architects did a really good job of mixing in materials, bringing, you know, and having the two smaller buildings really brings the scale, makes it a little bit more relatable to the shopping center to the south, and the office building to the southwest. And having the two smaller buildings also kind of tends to attract smaller tenants that does tend to have, you know, less truck deliveries, truck traffic, usually limited hours, so they're not like a 24-hour operation. So we felt that that pathway would have been better, because if one single building of 120,000 square feet did not have to have any windows, would only have needed 15% brick and stone on the front, and then 10% on the three sides. So like I said, it was, it was very difficult, but we were very happy that the applicant worked with us to really produce two very attractive buildings that do kind of, that fit in more in the area than one larger one would.
What type of trucks are we, are you...
No, I've got to keep most of my stuff protected.
Okay. What type of trucks are we looking at? I know there's different sizes. And about how many per day?
That's something that the applicant could probably talk a little bit more in detail. But one good thing is, because the site is limited, there is not any truck parking. You know, really, our largest truck generating uses usually have very large areas for the truck parking, and this only has the docks. And I believe most of the overhead units at the rear of the building are smaller overhead doors. They just have, I think, in each corner have the larger ones. So I think because of the scale, they've kind of designed that into it to have, you know, lesser amounts of truck. And I believe at P&amp;Z, they mentioned they were expecting kind of an office showroom-type uses to occupy this. They generally have like maybe one or two trucks a day.
When I read through the P&amp;Z minutes, or maybe it was the applicant itself, but it mentioned, you know, should just be a few eighteen-wheelers a month, you know, expecting of it, but a lot of should, variety, could be, I don't know how much of that is predictable, but you know, shouldn't have any parking on the street, should only have eighteen-wheelers a couple of times a month. That's the language I saw, and very soft kind of language.
Right. Unfortunately, we do have some tools, depending on, you know, what happens in the future. We can take a look at, you know, parking on the street. We can, I mean, we've done it in other parts of the city where we've restricted truck traffic from impacting neighborhoods. So there's some tools in our tool belt if needed in the future.
Yeah, I think that, that in the streets over there, in by the liquor store and all that stuff, is not in the best shape already.
Yeah, exactly.
And so I don't know how I would handle that, so I have concerns about that.
Yeah, that, I have some big concerns about that, the truck traffic in the, in the streets and, and the nurse, that are in call, nursing homes.
Some memory care.
Thank you.
It's a step above, if you look at his memory care on the front of it, so it's a step above, it's just living.
Yeah. And what kind of constant noise are they going to be dealing with? Because...
Yep. Let's go ahead, let's go ahead, because it sounds like we're starting to get into questions that we're going to be asking the applicant, which would be, would rather, much rather do that out there. Thank you for the background from staff, appreciate that. And we'll go ahead and move along to finishing up the review of the agenda. Item 13, declaration of vacancy on animal services and consideration of an appointment.
Getting you, I think, could be great.
And we have reports. And then we do have one item for closed session, which is personnel. Any questions or comments on the agenda before we move on to workshop session, item B? Looks like we have AI strategy presentation.
So thank you for that. Mayor Kelsel, good evening. I've got really exciting stuff to talk to you about, and I've got about an hour worth of content that I got to squeeze into 20 minutes, so I'm going to talk fast. There's a little leave, an opportunity for any questions that you might have, but feel free to interrupt me at any time, okay, during this, this presentation. So what are we talking about? So we're not talking about the real cool AI projects and all that stuff, what we're really talking about is how do we embrace this technology? How do we do it in a responsible manner, right? So how do we create a framework, right, that allows us to identify risks, right, and then have transparency through this process? So that's really what we're going to talk about today. What you're looking at here, this is the one pager, right? So this is everything that we're trying to talk about, all on one page, a whole lot of information. But instead of spending any time here, because we don't have a lot, I'm just going to get right into it. Our strategy, right? So how did we even come up with this? Well, it was really a group effort. So there's various people as far as directors that are on our team, as far as our, our group that created this. We also leveraged our consultant with best practices, guidelines, things of that nature. We leveraged our 2025 plan to inform us of business initiatives and wanting to align that with the technology. What you see on, on this side as far as the strategy approach, right, these are really the systematic steps that we took in order to, to create that. So the first thing that we wanted to do is to create a, a vision, right, that's going to be really the underlying theme with everything that we're going to adopt. And with that vision, we, part of that, you got to have these guiding principles, right, that you're going to adopt, and everything that you do is going to build on that, right? So foundational. We had to then look and see where are we in this journey, right? That's one important aspect that every organization needs to take. They need to identify their maturity, if you will, in order to know what, what can you take on, right? What can you actually look at as far as projects and things within your environment? And then prioritization. So the reality of it is, we will have in double digits the number of projects that are brought to us with respect to AI initiatives over the next 12 months. We can't do them all, right? So how do we prioritize these and truly get the most functionality, right? And then we'll talk about the next steps. So, these are the individuals that I spoke about that made up our committee. So as you can see, we've got our Deputy City Manager as our sponsor, and then we've got a lot of directors on here, as well as people, others from, from our staff. And so we've met three times now, we're meeting quarterly, we might increase that as we go on, but currently that's the, the frequency. So I talked about the vision, the vision and mission, and this is collectively what this group came up with. So our AI vision, we'll use AI to work smarter, deliver better services, predict needs from our data, and do so with a commitment to safety, transparency, and fairness. Again, you're going to hear those words over and over and over again. That's the reason that you do this, right? Our mission is to harness the power of artificial intelligence to support staff's drive for efficiency, enhance service delivery, and elevate customer experience. We're committed to utilizing AI responsibly, safely, and transparently. Staff will create meaningful and lasting impact for our community by leveraging AI's insights and predictive capabilities. All right. These are our strategic principles, right? So you're going to have your strategic principles, you're going to have your responsible principles, right? So strategically, how are we trying to do this? Number one, first and foremost, anything that we're going to look at as pertains to adopting AI, we're not looking at the cool AI technology that's out here, right? Because that's the shiny stuff, and what I'm getting at is, you have to start with the use case. You start with defining the business problem, what are we trying to solve, right? And from the use case, that defines what type of technology you're actually going to incorporate. So AI might not even be the best technology for the use case. So if you go the other way, it's like, you know, the tail wagging the dog, so to speak. So that's, that's really paramount. Two, interoperable existing processes. So here, if we've got a process that we can incorporate AI into, that's low-hanging fruit for us, right? That's an attempt to make something that's already established more efficient. Now, it's not to say that we can't redefine the process and do it all over, but when you're looking at low-hanging fruit, things that you can initiate upfront, it's a good way to start. Buy over build. So this is a misconception with a lot of people, in that we're not going to build anything, right? So these companies that are building these large language models, they are spending hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars to train these language models. That's not the business that we're in. We're not going to have machine learning engineers on staff, right? But what we are going to do is we're going to buy. We're going to buy the majority of our solutions. And we might extend. An extend would be like, like what we brought to you at, at Kelsel Retreat last year, where we had the, the demonstration of the, the machine running llama, and, and we were integrating the CRM responses, showing how the AI actually could depict what department it went to. So that would be an example of actually extending a model. So we'll do things of that nature. And then, doing this improvement in scalability. Going back to that example, that example was really cool from a proof of concept to show what you could do, but it's not scalable, right? It's running on one machine, one graphic scholar card, no parallel processing, it's a one-to-one relationship. So if you're going to try and scale that solution, you would need to put it in like some type of cloud-hosted environment, so we could leverage the compute. Moving forward, responsible principles. We just talked about the strategic ones, so these are the responsible principles. These six principles, if you will, are again, the, the pillars of everything that we're going to do. And quite frankly, every organization should have principles that mirror these in some form or fashion. As we mature, we very well could look at like accountability, and then go deeper and be a little more granular in what that means to us. But again, at base level, every organization should start out with principles very similar to this. Okay, so this is kind of where we're bringing it all together, right? So what you see here, you've got business goals, right? And these goals should resonate, because these are really your big moves. Your big moves are your strategic, for instance, data-driven organization, values-driven organization. And then you notice value, serve, and when we look at our actual prioritization tool, we have all of them in there to choose from. But in essence, what you're trying to do, this goes back to where we're aligning the use case with a technology, right? So let's take this one, for instance, value resonance, experience, right? What are you trying to do? We're trying to improve customer support. And then virtual assistants, chatbots, things of that nature would be an initiative, right? And that would be the technology that you could use as far as from a AI perspective to align with that business initiative that, again, corresponds with the business goal. And you can see other examples of these various categories in the slide. Talked about maturity, right? How do we actually measure that? These are the five categories, if you will, that we, we utilize to measure where we are at, and these are going to be the ones that we continue, right, over and over and over again. So we're talking about the governance, right? The governance is just that, what we're doing today is the framework, right? It's the guardrails. What do we have in place? Data management. So one cool thing about government, about us, we've got a lot of data. And data's lifeblood, are they not, right? It's not just about having the data. Is the data ready for consumption, right? Do you have ETL, meaning do you have processes that you have to do to massage the data before you're ready to consume it? Is your data all in one landing spot? Meaning, yeah, you can have all the data in the world, but do you have data in Google Drive? Do you have data in SharePoint? Do you have data over here on shared drives, right? Is your data categorized correctly, right, as pertains to confidential data, sensitive data, all those? So a lot goes into the data management aspect. People, again, I talked about, we're not building anything, right? So we don't need machine learning engineers, right? But that skill set is going to affect all of us. We do need people on staff that are bright, that are intelligent, that can implement these technologies, but also for the end users, for the rest of the staff. There's a lot of upskilling that's going to be, have to transpire over the next couple of years. Process, we talked about that. Other existing processes that we can put this in line, are there additional processes that we need to do as it pertains to onboarding? One of the processes that we've done as this committee is that prioritization of AI that I just talked about. Technology, again, we're looking at cloud-type solutions if you're wanting to host this. We're not going to be buying a whole bunch of GPUs or ASICs or anything of that nature. We will leverage somebody else to actually do the computing. Where are we today? So with our current state, we're in between incorporation and proliferation. And the reason I say that is because we, we have started some pilots, we've got a couple of projects out, but not very many at scale, if you will. We're going to talk about this a little more, but what we're going to try and do is, how do we bridge that gap in the next 12 months? And so we're going to finish talking about that, two more slides, I believe. Okay, so I talked a little bit about prioritizing initiatives. This is an example, we're kind of bringing all this together, right? We want the stuff over here in this quadrant, right? Because that's high-value, and that's very feasible, right? So we can do it. We either have the people, we have the technology, all that good stuff. So a couple of examples, we talked about the customer support, right? Or AI transcripts, that's a great one, right? So that's already built into an existing solution, so Zoom, right? So we already have that technology, so very feasible, very easy to implement, so easy to just check box, turn it on, right? Now, value, there's a lot of value in, now I'm getting transcripts from all this, but in all of this context, it's really easy. Anything that we create is now an official record, right? So there's other, there's trickle effects, I guess is what I'm getting at, just because it's easy, right? We got to think about, now all of that stuff is, again, same intention requirements that we would with any other document. But then you look at something like here, like number two, for instance, social media engagement. Perform sentiment analysis, right, to better understand what the priorities and things of that nature are. High-value, a little more difficult, right, to, to integrate than that of the AI transcripts. But the prioritization tool, if you notice, these are color-coded, again, back to those values, right? I say values, back to your strategic goals and/or big moves. Values-driven, data-driven, build, and serve. So generative AI guidelines. Currently, we do not have a policy, so you're going to see that coming up. So we're looking at what to do and what not to do, right? Obviously, there's a lot of, we've rolled out some generative AI within the organization. When I say some, like 40 licenses, right? And it's really more of a pilot for individuals. It's, it's really cool, some of the use cases that we're finding, but some of the things that you want to do, for instance, it would be great if you had a JD, you could put a JD into ChatGPT, you could get all your applicants, put them in there, and it's going to tell you who the best applicant is on paper, right? Which sounds like a great idea. What we'll tell you about it is you just subjected all of that personal identifiable information into a publicly accessible large language model. It's a big no-no, right? Huge no-no. Would it work? Absolutely it would work. Should you do it? Absolutely should not do it. Strategic vendors and partnerships, again, when we don't have to build these things, how do we leverage existing partnerships, right? And so these are examples of industry partners that we currently do business with today. These are various, I say today, some of this, like when you've got billing and CRM, we're currently shopping for ERP, so you see a couple of them up there, but with these new RPs, ERPs, what you're saying are things that, like RPAs, robotic process automation, where you're taking manual tasks, repetitive tasks, like payroll or, or things of that nature, and you're actually automating it. And RPA, it's not an actual robot doing it, that's more scripting, but regardless, all the same, a lot of these, these duties, if you will, that individuals are doing, we're going to have an ability to truly upskill some of their talents and have them freed up to do more critical thinking tasks, if you will. And so this is a scale addressing our current maturity. And so I like this short because it actually, you've got the numbers, right? And so it's, it's pretty objective about where you're going and where you are. The orange is what we addressed with our current state, the blue is where we're wanting to be. You'll notice that the governance and the data management are higher as far as what we're trying to hit. And the reason, quite frankly, is these two, there's not really any additional monetary funding to hit these, if you will. The data or the AI governance is exactly what we're doing, right? It's establishing that framework, it's putting the guardrails around it. With the data management, we actually have an ongoing project right now to enhance some of our, for instance, our Laserfish project that we've already got funding that was, was given to us this year. So we've already got initiatives to further that. And so we feel as if we're going to make farther strides in those two areas than the other three. And then this last slide, again, is showing that gap analysis, right? Where are we today with incorporation? How do we get over to the proliferation? And again, like I was telling you, we've got some, yeah, we've done PLCs, we've got a few things out, but not really at scale, so how do we get there? So one thing we need to do to bridge your gap, we're going to be bringing an AI, a generative AI policy to you guys. I would hope to be able to do that this quarter, and that is, again, to establish that governance really for the entire organization. Data management and operations, just talked about that kind of in-depth with respect to some of the challenges of the data. We've got a data directive, for instance, with classification and all that, we need to go ahead and actually get that signed and put in place. People and skills, kind of talked about that, right? We're currently sending, any opportunity that we have as pertains to our staff to, to get them upskilled, but now what we're looking at doing is potentially having like AMAs with staff, right, in lower level, like the Ask, sorry, Ask Me Anythings, right? To where maybe it's once a month, right? Or maybe it's every other month, we haven't established that cadence, but to where staff could come down and truly ask away, right, with our resident experts. Other thing that we're talking about doing is we're looking to onboarding, ensuring that just like how we have security awareness training, during the onboarding process, we have responsible AI training, right? So individuals know the do's and don'ts. And then technology infrastructure. I spoke about that briefly, but in order to continue this journey, if you will, a lot of this is going to be leveraged really with, with cloud-hosted opportunities. So with that, that was record time. Any questions might you have?
I'm excited to look at this.
Yes, sir.
Can we go back and look at that curve you had with the, the adoption?
Yes, sir.
I'm totally stealing this slide.
Absolutely.
This is the slide.
Great slide.
Yes, great slide. We talked about AI transcripts. There's, there's other aspects as well, though, because the transcripts can be, AI can take and make notes out of that, it can get mentions out of that, how many of those are mentioned? It can go through and have recaps, as well as, you know, bullet points, action items.
Yes, sir.
So we're talking about that, not just transcripts, but using the...
Absolutely.
Fantastic, okay. And then, we talked about the public cloud, the dangers of going through and putting like IP, personal information out there. I'm assuming we're looking at like the Azure Open AI, the things that contain and whatever you want there.
So yes and no, meaning that we're looking at everything. Okay, I don't want to... We're not necessarily a Microsoft shop, 100%, right? So obviously with Azure, that's a benefit there, and yours with Microsoft Copiles, right? You're seeing that incorporate. So we are, we have pushed out Gemini licenses to just a handful of people, city management and our department, because in essence, that's the equivalent to copilot, right, on the Microsoft side. As it pertains to the, the cloud offerings, we're looking at Azure, but we're also looking to see what Amazon has to offer as well.
Yeah, I didn't mean to like push, I have no stock in Microsoft, so I didn't...
We're interested.
I just tried to draw the distinction between the private cloud AI and the public cloud AI.
Yes, sir. And there is a difference, and that's a very good point that you're making. Meaning that what's great is if you can, and I'll, I'll take our ERP for example, if you can have everything intrinsic, right, to your own organization, then you minimize your risk. And it's, you're able to then leverage a lot more sensitive information to be able to feed, to get the, the decision-making, if you will. But, but again, that's assuming that you're within that enclosed private environment. So like when we're talking about taking ChatGPT and extending that, well, that's still not a pub, a private LLM. Yes, sir.
The last question, I'll let everybody else go, that just gets me excited, though.
That's a cool stuff.
So this, we talked mostly about enterprise-level AI processes, and you hinted a little bit about end user AI.
Yes, sir.
The, the many AI help draft Word documents, job descriptions, letting it generate PowerPoint decks and things like that. Is that a separate, is that separately on the, on the...
Yeah, no, no, it's the same, and in fact, I need to go back to where we were. Right, boom. So permitted uses, right, so a lot of what you're talking about, right? You know, so again, it's, how do I do this responsibly, though? Right? And that's where you got to think about what you're doing before you do it, meaning that one thing that was great, we were taking the charter the other day, and we were looking to see how we could improve it, right? Just out of curiosity, well, that's a publicly accessible document, no harm, no foul, right? But then if I have something that's sensitive with legal, for instance, right, I might be able to get a whole lot of insights by leveraging, but it would not be responsible and Liz would have my head, right? So again, that's why we're trying to give these guidelines, but to your point, yes, sir. We are looking at end users, and two products, quite frankly, that we're looking at end users right now are ChatGPT, the pay, we've got a team, group membership for that, and as well as the Gemini product. Those are the personal copilots, if you will, personal assistants, if you will.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The only thing, and I think you hit on it, is that the biggest, I guess, weakness that could occur are the employees who may not be as up to speed, so I think the training is going to be critical to make sure those prohibited uses are, if not a sticker right there on their screens before they use it, because that's the thing that you're, but other than that, I mean, I love AI, I use it all the time, knowing that some of the stuff I'm going to get is wrong right now, but, you know, understanding like what's private and what can, what's accessible to everybody.
Yes, sir, training is paramount. And what you're going to find, I know a lot of people are afraid of losing jobs, right? And everything I read suggests that jobs will be lost, but more jobs will be created, right? And so it's really that transition of, okay, how do I, how do I gain this digital literacy, right, to where now I'm empowered to leverage these tools, right? To free me up from doing a lot of that redundant work that I was doing in the past, right? And so in essence, you know, depending on who you read, you know, a gardener, it's anywhere from 40 to 60% as far as what they're saying employees should be able to, so you should be able to make a good employee great, great, excellent, you know, and so forth and so What other questions might we have?
Couple of, couple of quick ones, nobody else on the queue. Where's our data currently?
Very good question. That's why I alluded to it. We've got data, and it depends on what data you're asking about, sir, but no, we do, we have data within Laserfish, right? All of that's on-prem, right? We've got data on our HNS drives, that's on-prem, right? But then we have Google Drives, right, where a large majority of end-user data resides. And so those are going to be your three primary places where you're going to find our organizational data. However, you know, people could still save something local, they shouldn't, right, but they could. But those are, when you're looking at our data stores, now we have repositories as well, meaning that like, for instance, HIPAA files aren't HIPAA-earned, right? Or HRIS stuff is a share off of HR, sir. You know, so, but for the most part, when you're looking at where's the majority of our city data, it's either going to be in Google Drive or our own internal shared drives, or it's already in Laserfish.
So with that baseline of where we are.
Yes, sir.
How strong are Google's data management rules as far as who gets to access what? My understanding is that they're really not best of breed at this point, they're getting better.
One of the downsides, I say downsides, and this is something that we invested in this year, you guys awarded additional funding for backups for us on the, on Google, and that was really a concern that we had in that we're putting all of our eggs in that basket, assuming that they're backing everything up and everything. We don't have as much insight into the platform as we do in the majority of them. And so to your point, there are additional toolsets that are on the horizon that give you more of a holistic view. So I can tell you, if Jennifer shares a document externally, I know she shared a document, I don't know what's in the document, I know the title of the document, I know that she shared it externally, I don't know who she shared it with. So, you know, so we can set alarms for three things that look suspicious, for instance, they believe me, but I don't have the insight to drill down to see exactly what they did. So that would be one of those controls, in essence, that you're alluding to that's not mature yet.
Yeah, my biggest concern with all of this is historically, we create a file, create a folder, whatever that is, and we share it, or we don't, or we use the default settings, whatever they are. And we've got this thing called security through obscurity, right?
Yes, sir.
So I've created it, nobody else knows it exists, but it's there, and it's living on the server, and somebody could stumble across it, and it could be full of social security numbers or what. AI doesn't care.
No.
There is no obscurity to AI, and everything that it can see, that lives there, it can see. And so I would be, I'd be really hesitant until we get a very strong data integrity, data management process in place, and that might mean somebody other than Google, because if you don't have the transparency, you just don't have it.
So you're 100% right, 1,000% right.
Cancel.
And that's one of the huge uplifts, if you will, is that data management.
So I'm assuming, just to step into that, when you're talking about technology infrastructure, we're going to be talking about cloud spend on some sort of data lake somewhere.
We have to. I mean, it's not even a, you don't have the luxury or latitude to really do things on-prem anymore, not of this magnitude.
No, not with the data bank that we have currently that we want to leave, a little leverage, right? I'm not going to be able to cut and paste my UDC every time I want to do something.
Absolutely.
So, okay. I'm very comfortable that you guys are on the right path, but that, to me, that's foundational. If we can't figure out exactly who gets what when, and if I can't, you know, if I cut and paste something and it's got locked down here, but it's, the new document is not locked down, that concerns me as well, so.
Very valid points, and again, you can't protect what you don't know.
Right.
Right? So that's where that categorization, that classification, everything has to be done, that's your, again, foundational level before you can build on top of it.
Super. Well, I think, I think if we're investing in that, you know, zero trust type of model that locks down who gets to see what, I think, I think that's a really great first step, because once we have a good foundation, this just keeps leveraging. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Does the manager have anything else to add, sir? With that being said, I think we are done with workshop, and we will reconvene at 7:00. There we go. It is 7:00, we're going to call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order, we do have a quorum. First up on tonight's agenda is the invocation from Councilmember William Meredith.
Please join me in a moment of silent contemplation.
Thank you. Councilman Troyer?
Yes. Please join in the pledges to the US and Texas flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honorable Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
All right, next up, we have a presentation, the announcement of our 2025 Color Palooza logo contest winner and unveiling of the design. Our Arts Center Manager Denise Helbing will announce, and I think she's here. Thanks.
Excited? Oh, hello, there I am.
There we go.
Good evening, good evening. I am excited to reveal the 2025 Color Palooza logo design and introduce you to the artist who created it tonight. We had a strong participation in this year's contest with 15 very creative entries. This year's winning logo was designed by LHS Harmon sophomore Alexa Odebor. She wanted to create a logo that was colorful and had a vintage or retro style with themes of art and vibrancy. Let's go ahead and reveal the logo now.
It's very cool.
There we go. Although Alexa was not enrolled in a visual art class last semester when the contest was conducted, one of her friends was in an art class and told her about it, and Alexa decided to give it a try. She plans to major in something artistic in college related to illustration or graphic design, and she said she's most looking forward to seeing her logo on all the different merchandise and on the banners when just driving down the street. The award for the logo contest is $1,000, is a $1,000 scholarship, which is administered by the Greater Lewisville Arts Alliance. And tonight, we've given her the very first shirt made with the logo, and so she'll be able to wear that before the festival, and we'll make sure to get her a full inventory of all the merchandise that we will create. So congratulations, Alexa.
Thank you, Alexa, really appreciate the work, it's going to be awesome. All right, item D, public hearing, number one. Public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending Article 3, Chapter 6, zoning petitions and procedures of Volume 2 of the Lewisville City Code known as the Unified Development Code by amending Section 3.6.6 to remove limitations on resubmission of zoning petitions following city council denial. The Unified Development Code prohibits the resubmission of a zoning petition for one year after a city council vote to deny the request. The proposed amendment would remove the prohibition to allow any applicant the ability to resubmit a new application at any time. Planning and zoning commission recommended unanimous approval 5 to nothing on December 17th, 2024, and is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. Counsel, if there are no questions or comments, and I have nothing from public comment here, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Public hearing is now closed. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Article 3, Chapter 6, zoning petitions and procedures of Volume 2 of the Lewisville City Council known as, I mean, the Lewisville City Code known as the Unified Development Code by amending Section 3.6.6 to remove limitations on submission of zoning petitions following city council denial, providing for repealer severability, a penalty and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item D2, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance repealing ordinance number 0129-19-SUP and rescinding and terminating the special use permit granted therein, allowing minor automobile service, including tune-up and repair services, and a car wash facility on approximately 1.22 acres, legally described as Lot 3, Block A, the corners at Valley Parkway addition, located at 1111 West Round Grove Road, FM 3040, zone local commercial. On July 15th, 2019, the city council approved a special use permit to allow minor automobile services, including tune-up and repair services, and a car wash facility on the subject property. The city council has the authority to rescind and terminate the SUP following a public hearing in the event that the abandonment of the structure, lease space, lot, or tract of land for up to 180 days occurs, or if one or more of the conditions imposed by the SUP have not been met. The subject property violates two of the conditions, the approved landscape plan and abandonment of the site for 180 days. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 5 to nothing on December 17th, 2024, and it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Lutke, our planning director, is available for comment, and the public hearing is now I have a, I have a hand, we can do that, come on.
I have a question.
Oh, you have a question? That's, well, if you have a question, unfortunately, we have to use it on the mic because it's public record.
That's fine.
So if you wouldn't mind naming and address for the record?
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Mark Westmoreland, I own the preschool to the north, Children's Lyhouse Valley Parkway.
Yes, sir.
Just had a question, and I don't know if this is the proper venue to vet this or not, but with respect to the location of the dumpster on the property. I was, I had spoken with Russ, is Russ here this evening? With, with the?
I'm not Russ, right here.
Okay, right, now I'd spoken with Russ, just about seeing if we could move that to the northwest corner, because that's right at an intersection with no stop signs where people travel in and out, past McDonald's, between McDonald's and the car wash to the north, up into our parking lot, and traffic intersects there, the dumpster would sort of create a visual block to the intersection. We also have security cameras to allow us to see cars exiting that it would obstruct, and Russ didn't seem to have a problem with moving it to the northwest quadrant. Is this the proper venue to discuss this, or should we?
So it's, it's, it's fine for you to bring it up, I think what would need to happen is we need to have staff talk with you about the locations, because there are, there are some right-of-way thoroughfare types of things, as well as truck movement through that property, so. But absolutely, between you and staff and the property owner, we have that conversation, the SUP is not going to impact that at all.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Counsel, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Public hearing is now closed, vote is six to nothing. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve the ordinance per the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by repealing zoning ordinance number 0129-19-SUP, rescinding and terminating the special use permit granted therein, allowing minor automotive services, including tune-up and repair services, and a car wash facility on approximately 1.22 acres, legally described as Lot 3, Block A, corners at Valley Ridge Parkway addition, located at 1111 West Round Grove Road, FM 3040, zone local commercial district LC, providing for savings clause repealer severability and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item D3, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for a car wash on a 1.22 acre lot legally described as Lot 3, Block A, the corners at Valley Parkway addition, located 1111 West Round Grove Road, zone local commercial as requested by Haley Peterson, Lone Star Builders, on behalf of ROISS LLC, the property owner, case 24-02-2-SUP. The proposed project will remodel a former quick car, car wash, and vehicle repair facility to a new quick quack car wash. Say that five times fast. A special unit permit is, or special use permit is required since another automotive-related use operates within 1,000 feet. The new car wash will provide additional landscape, use less water, and provide higher water reclamation than the previous car wash. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 7 to nothing on November 5th, 2024, and is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Mr. Lutke available for questions. The public hearing on this is now open, and if there are no questions or comments.
I have a quick question, so, Richard, the, from what I'm understanding, the difference in the use, at least, between this proposed use and what was previously approved, was that what was previously approved was, had some minor automotive repair and a car wash, and this is just a car wash?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other questions? If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Public hearing is now closed, and a vote of six to nothing. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
I move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for car wash on approximately 1.221 acres, legally described as Lot 3, Block A, the corners at Valley Parkway addition, located at 1111 West Round Grove Road, FM 3040, zone local commercial LC district, providing for a savings clause repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item D4, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from light industrial district to heavy industrial district, and heavy industrial district to light industrial district on 8.504 acres legally described as a portion of Lot 1, Block A, MA Block Edition, located at 1201 South Railroad Street as requested by Arturo Flores, the applicant, on behalf of Flores. on behalf of Flor Enterprises Incorporated, the property owner, case 240910-Z. Currently, the northern portion of the property is zone light industrial district, and the southern portion is zone heavy industrial district. The applicant proposes rezoning the western portion of the property where the existing office building sits as LI, while rezoning the eastern portion of the property behind the building as HI. The property is surrounded by other industrial uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 7 to nothing on December 3rd, 2024, and it is the city council to, recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Lutke is available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. We have any comments or questions?
Yeah, quick, quick comment, and I think it's already been summed up, but this is really just a flip-flopping of sections of that property, and everything around there is already very similar in use, right?
Yes, that is correct.
There's nothing new here. Okay. Thank you.
No other questions or comments for the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion to close the public hearing passes six to nothing. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve?
I move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 8.504 acres of land legally described as a portion of Lot 1, Block A, MA Block Edition, and located at 1201 South Railroad Street by rezoning portions of the property from light industrial LI district zoning to heavy industrial HI district zoning, and rezoning portions of the property from heavy industrial HI district zoning to light industrial LI district zoning. Correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for a savings clause repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 5, D5, is public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for an accessory building accessory structure on point oh five seven eight acres legally described as Lot 44, Block A, Rock Brook Place, located at 434 Hamilton Street, Zone Townhouse 2 Residential District, as requested by Xantana Tapia, the applicant on behalf of Eresha Lewis, the property owner, case number 24-11-19-SUP. The property owner is wishing to add a detached patio cover to the backyard of her townhome. The patio cover does not meet the Unified Development Code supplemental use regulations for accessory buildings, accessory structures, and requires approval of a special use permit. Patio covers are common additions to the neighborhood. Staff finds this used to be compatible with the surrounding area, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 5 to nothing on December 17th, 2024. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Lutke is available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. If there is no questions or comments about this item, counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is now closed. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for an accessory structure set back less than five feet from the side lot, from the side lot line on approximately 0.0578 acres legally described as Lot 44, Block A, Rock Brook Place, located at 434 Hamilton Street and Zone Townhouse 2 Residential, TH2 District, providing for a savings clause repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item E, visitors forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have one request for comment from Mr. Oscar Smith. Mr. Smith, your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you so much. My name is Oscar. This is my wife, Rose. Our address is 4869 Timber Trail, Carrollton, Texas. We're here because our daughter was a resident of Louisville for approximately 10 years. Her address was 5101 Del Molen, Louisville. We are here as the founders of the L. Christina Smith Domestic Abuse Prevention Foundation. We are here to ask you and the council to save the date. We had a, our very first fundraiser last year, which coincidentally conflicted with something that the city of Louisville was having, and that was October 19th. So, we're preparing for our second annual fundraiser, which will be held at the Windhaven Meadows Park, 5400 Windhaven Parkway, Plano, Texas. And this is going to be a one-mile fun walk, a five, 5K run, and we would like to invite each of you and everyone that will be willing to participate to come out and help support this cause. Our purpose and our objective is to eradicate domestic abuse, starting in about the fifth grade, and try to follow those kids up through their college age, college years. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you so much for bringing this to us.
I have flyers.
September 20th.
I have flyers for the council.
If you wouldn't mind, I'll, I'll make sure to distribute them to the council.
Okay. We gave them to...
Oh, we got them. Okay. Then they're handled. They'll be, they'll be in our mailboxes.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Happy New Year. I have no further comments for visitors forum. We'll go ahead and move into item F, consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests. For a member of the public to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I have no requests for removal of items from the consent agenda. If there are none from council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G12, regular hearing, consideration of an alternative standard related to architectural standards of the I-35E corridor overlay district standards on 6.7970 acres located at 420 Oak Bend Drive legally described as Lot 1A, Block B, Vista Ridge Village addition, zoned light industrial as requested by Diego Perez Garcia of Westwood Professional Services on behalf of the owner, CH Realty X-Gap I DFW Oak Bend LP, case 24-11-16-AltsDD. The applicant is requesting an alternative standard to exterior building material requirements associated with the redevelopment of an old movie theater site into two distribution warehouse facilities. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 4 to nothing on December 17th, 2024, and it is recommended that the city council approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Lutke, our planning director, available for questions, and I do have council member Kelly wanting to make some comments on this particular item. So, with that, we'll go ahead and start with you, council member Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm not quite sure how to, when I'm clicking where?
There you go.
I point up to that.
Just flail about. It'll happen.
Well done. Fantastic. All right. So, this started off, and thank you for indulging me. Before I get started, I want to thank Richard and the staff and the developers as well for working so hard to try to find a compromise. Compromise will always leave everybody happy, but then, you know, thank you for the hard work. I don't want to, I don't want to bypass that. This first, this started off as a little notes to myself on how to speak to this, then it became a little, a little deck that I wanted to use and pass out to council. I thought, well, we should probably go ahead and make this an item. Thank you, Claire and staff for helping me get this up and on the screen here. That's just a framing slide. This is what we're talking about right now. I want to talk about what is the IHI 35E corridor overlay for? Its purpose is basically to make sure we have aesthetics. If you boil it all down, that's what it's trying to do. Make sure we have aesthetics on the I-35 corridor. We don't wind up with it's a blight of warehouses going back and forth up the I-35. And that's, that's made clear from the purpose, as well as the architectural standards. And I do want to say that, again, I, and I have the emphasis mined here on this last line, the standards are intended to elevate the visual appeal of the corridor district. It doesn't mean just visible from the I-35 highway. It's, it's visible for any, anywhere. If it meant, if it meant just from the I-35 highway, then it would spell out that just the walls that are visible from the highway would be considered. But this is meant to make sure we have aesthetics for any street that is visible, that has visibility to, to the warehouses that are up there. There were actually, it looks like we've did a little, little rap here, but it looks like we, we had four asks for deviations from code. Two have been granted, the ones in blue have been granted already. 12-foot walkway went to eight foot. That was a 33% change. There were lack, there's lack of room for trucks to maneuver. We had a, a, we have a change of the open space from, it looks like 14,000, almost 15,000 square feet to about 11,025% change. Again, limited space is why that change was asked for. The awning was, was pretty benign, 5% variance, not a big deal. And now we're being asked to, what we're voting on today, was the variance of 63% for facade, facade, basically what can go on the facade. So I just wanted to frame that out, because I think this, this helps paint the picture that this is probably not the best use for this space overall. When I look at, we have to make room for truck maneuverability in two different areas here, relating 25% of open space. I have concern that this isn't appropriate use for this, of this space overall. I wanted to come through and, and point this out as well. We drove this last, I guess yesterday, up and down the roads. So, you can see Movies 8 is what's in gray. It is, there is light industrial over there, but everywhere that is green over here, these are all people who are going to see the back of that building. So everyone who's going to drive in Oak Bend is going to see the back of that building. Everybody who goes into Rock Brook is going to see the back of that building, those apartments over there, the townhomes over there. People who walk to the park that is about two blocks up are going to see the back of that building, and people who walk back are going to see the back of that building. So this is specifically to, to speak to who sees the back of that facade. Again, it's not just the IHI 35 that, that is concerned about. It's everybody can see that. You can also see that while this is zone light industrial... I'm going to jump to this one. The usage out there in that space is, is, this is nothing like what's being out there right now. So this is, this, this distribution warehouse, it's not conforming to the rest of the use in this area. So you can see these are all restaurants, they are, they are shopping, things like that. This doesn't conform to what the use out there in that area. If we go back here, and look, this is a shot I took from my car heading down Oak Bend. That is the Movies 8 facade that's going to be visible to anybody driving down that road. It's not just a little bit visible, it's fully visible, top to bottom. Those people in the memory care facility, which is, was right there being highlighted, they will have to live with this and look out the back window and see this every, every day that they, that they're out there in that memory care facility. I also want to point out that there is a lot for sale. It's also light industrial. It's, it's kind of catty corner from where it's at. It's, it's a little more than an acre. I have concerns that we're setting a precedent now. So we set a precedent where we're going to allow variances that, that have warehouses going on I-35, that this building here, Pet Spa, is that the next, is that the next of fall to have warehouses put out? The Outback Steakhouse, I have concerns that we let one, we have one, if we basically make accommodations for one, we're not making accommodations for this type of development along IH35. And Mayor, I think that's everything I've got. I'm happy to engage in conversation, but I'll turn it over to other, other council members as well.
Counsel?
I appreciate that, because I, I also have some concerns about the proximity of the amount of residential that is this close to, but I do want to, I want to separate out this conversation and, and make sure that we all understand that this is, this discussion is not about use, that, you know, because the use that is proposed is allowed by right. So the question is really about, are we, are we willing to allow an alternative standard for the facade? I do, I've really gone back and forth on this one, Patrick, and I, so I really appreciate your insight on it, because I do, when we're stuck, when we start to talk about who all is going to have to live with it and look at it, and seeing the picture, can you put it back up? The picture from the memory care, that's pretty close. Richard, can you help me remember which side, what, the proposed plan, where are the loading docks?
They are on the north side facing the wooded area, which is Flood Plain Floodway of Timber Creek.
Okay. So they would be on the opposite side of this building, but still, they would kind of be... Where's the memory care facility?
Memory care is on the west side.
Can you go back to that?
Would be facing the ag open.
Right. Memory care is there, and then they would be over here?
On the north side.
That's north, right?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it's still pretty close to that. It's also kind of close to, what is this, a multifamily complex over here? And there's a, I'm really uncomfortable with all the, with all of the residential right here. And even though I appreciate everything that the, that staff has done to work with the applicant to make sure that we're getting something that, you know, with the two buildings instead of the one large building and, and trying to scale it down, I appreciate staff working with the applicant to get that to work. I'm still just very uncomfortable with the amount of residential that's just right here. In, in this case, I would want to see us uphold our, our standards for the, the facade. Now, does that mean that, you know, we, if we are less willing to give on that, are they able to make one building work and attract larger, you know? I don't want to see 100,000 square foot building there either. And I'm curious to hear the rest of everybody's thoughts, because I'm, I'm kind of, I'm still weighing it here.
So, I, so I'm probably on the opposite spectrum of what Patrick just said. Although I do, I do take into account what, what he has said, I do feel that our staff and the developer have worked together to place this on the site. I mean, the, the docks are on the backside by the creek, the, I mean, right now, the, the memory care is looking at the backside of a theater, right? You know, the left side of what they're proposing is not that different than what they're looking at currently. When I first looked at the elevation of this, I didn't even think it was a, a warehouse. It looked like a retail space. So I do believe they've made, have made a lot of effort to look, make this look appropriate, somewhat appropriate for what's, what's surrounding. I would much prefer two small buildings than one building on this site. I mean, I don't know how much, I don't know how much the pet supply place has trucks coming in and out of there either. I don't know, what's, what's there, any idea what there, how much comes out of there? So I, I think, you know, everything that's been done to work around this site, I think this to me is a better alternative than one big building. It's, it's lower in elevation, 37 feet versus the, what, 60, 60 feet that was talked about? So, also, I, I got to take into account the amount of number of calls that have been at this theater. I mean, I think it's over the 20, 20-plus calls at this theater. I mean, I was on a ride along at this theater myself, so I've seen this. So do you want to continue on?
I'm thinking more than 20.
Probably. I'm just, I know it's a minimum of 20. So I think with throwing all those factors in there, I think it's, I think it's a nice looking exterior for what is there comparable. I mean, you've got a liquor, you've got a, a liquor store right across the street, you've got a pet supply place next door. Yeah, you do have some residential, but I do think it will fit in with the surrounding neighborhood.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a couple closing comments if everybody else has done.
I, I think I'm going to let the rest of council make comments and then let you close if that's okay.
My, my comments are similar to what Kristen said, but also the one thing that hasn't been brought up, but we talked about it briefly, is the traffic and the trucks on Oak Bend and make sure we try to restrict those larger trucks if we do this. And everything we heard was kind of like, you know, we'll look into this, kind of soft language. I like, I like to get harder language before I even consider, consider this.
Well, I would say that, first off, I wouldn't make a decision on changing truck traffic on Oak Bend tonight, like, staff hasn't looked at that. So if that is something that you're wanting, first, I think we should hear from the applicant, you should be able to ask them questions about their operations, and then, you know, if council is so inclined that they don't want to approve this tonight, you know, tell us what your concerns, but you're open to approval potentially, tell us what you're wanting us to go back and work with the developer, and we can try to do what we can with them on that front.
Thank you, that's- and- and that's- that's the one sticking point with me. I think if we could do something with the truck traffic to ensure all of the residents around here that we're not going to have all of these trucks, you know, mantering through their-
And I do have an example from another site that I- I would like to share with you, this might- might be helpful. If you're familiar with the warehouse that is just east of the Super Walmart on Round Grove, that one backs up to a multifamily development. So there were a lot of concerns of especially traffic, truck traffic at night disturbing the residents, and the staff did work with the developer, made them very clearly where they, you know, we do have a nuisance chapter, and that- that involves noise at night. And so that- that developer was very proactive with potential tenants, and many of the potential tenants had called staff to verify, and I believe some of the ones that- that could potentially- that potentially had traffic at night did not end up locating there. The ones that did have some traffic during the day, but not at night. So that was kind of a-
That would be wonderful.
So that was one, you know, good outcome, working with that- with that developer, making them aware of what our- what our rules are and being cognizant that there are sensitive uses in the area.
Other questions? Okay. I have a few comments, just to add my two cents into this, and then I think we'll- we'll ask the developer to come on up. Patrick, you raise a really interesting point on here, that light industrial strip that's behind Rock Brook is actually not in the overlay district.
I understand.
And so it's actually a much higher risk of the- the impacts that you're thinking of, because we don't have an overlay district to control it. So that- that, I think, can be a challenge. As to Oak Bend, I'm not terribly worried about truck traffic, because we already get a considerable amount of truck traffic in there already. Almost all the deliveries to that, those buildings south, all the strip center down there, there's a ton of deliveries that come in through there, and Total Wine &amp; More probably gets more deliveries than all the rest of them put together. So, you know, the traffic's not coming all the way back, it's only coming to the middle, you know, there's only two entrances there, it's only coming to the middle or the back line of that light industrial on the south side. So I'm not overly concerned about truck traffic in the neighborhood coming off of thirty-five. I am concerned about truck traffic that might be coming off one-twenty-one and find a way to cut back through there, but I believe that's something that we can- we can mitigate pretty easily, is that. I'm also concerned about street-side parking down there, and I think that that we've done regularly, so I don't think that's big- a big issue. What I- I will say is, one of the things that we do not get, if this were to go back to its base entitlements, we could get no windows. We could get nothing that looks like office space, at which point, if- I- I look at good design, and- and I think to- to my colleague's point here, William's point on how it looks, doesn't really look like a distribution warehouse from the- from the design that we saw, I think, you know, when the market changes to the next thing, and if it's office, this is really set up to be office, and they just expand into the warehouse space and are done with it. My vision, as I'm seeing this, is a lot of specialty showrooms, maybe small flooring businesses, HVAC, those types of things, and yes, they have a large dock in the back, but that doesn't necessarily equate to big trucks all the time, that just equates to a large load, which I think is part of the challenge why I'm seeing soft language, is because they don't know who their tenants are. So, you know, the design of the building, I think, gives them some flexibility to look and conform to the neighborhood in a way that looks more like office space, you know, kind of like Paycom across the street, but still gives them the flexibility to take advantage of, you know, this- this distribution. And quite frankly, this distribution warehouse is because the only way you compete with Amazon is to be able to keep your logistics costs low, and so that's- that's why we're seeing this. So those are- those are my bits of- of input that I'm seeing and reading on that. I- I think the light industrial on the backside is a conversation for a- for another, because that's a- that's a, Patrick, I think that's a really concern, but I don't really think that necessarily applies to this one, just because it's got a complete different set of rules on it, so. With that, would the developer would like to come up and share any- any thoughts, comments, address some of the concerns that have been laid out?
Yes, sir. Bryce Hafner, Gray Arch Properties, address forty-two seventeen Stanford Avenue in Dallas, Texas. If you could put up the rendering that we- this will really help illustrate and maybe answer some concerns.
And while you guys are doing that, Councilmember Cade, I did want to address briefly the overlay district on I- thirty-five, because I was there when it got approved. It was approved and designed because it is our front porch, and we want to make sure that as I- thirty-five got its expansion, that our front porch got cleaned up. It was also very, very much, we were aware that we would have legacy uses that we would want to encourage to get to the new standard, but we also knew that we weren't going to get the entire apple, but that this would give us a suite of tools to negotiate to get something better than what we had. So I don't think the intent was ever to be a hundred percent lock this all down, I think the intent at the time was, let's give staff a plethora of tools that they can use to upgrade that- that front porch, with the understanding that we probably would never hit a hundred percent of it just from- from what we had on the ground already. Almost had it.
We're getting close. All right, good evening, happy new year. So as you can see right here, this is the actual proposed rendering of the project. This is taken from the same angle that a pro mayor term, Mr. Kelly, took from. So on the left side of the picture, that is currently the backside of the movie theater. And so essentially, to the west of that, to the left of it, is the memory care facility. So right now, what they're going to see is they're going to see the- one of the main entrances with the kind of our open area landscape going down to the driveway. And so this is building one, this is the larger sixty-eight thousand square foot building. In the back, as you go towards where that van is on the left, you'll go to the truck ward. There, you will actually have an eight-foot concrete screen wall that extends sixty feet, so the memory care facility will not be able to see any of the back of the building, or all they're going to see is this kind of premier storefront entryway. And as you kind of go further right down the building, in between, you'll see there's a large office entry on the left, and then in the middle, there's another entry, a larger one, and then in the middle of that, there's a smaller entry. And that's kind of where the variance is coming from. We're not asking for just a true reduction in the brick, we're actually, the variance is being driven because we're trying to substitute the brick with other higher-quality materials such as glass, such as canopies. In reality, that is just an exit door, and so it would just be brick with a con- with a metal door with no visibility. Now you have what appears to be a potential second entrance, highly visible, glazing all around it with a glass door. And so as the mayor mentioned, it does look like a flex office building, a retail center, it's far more designed and superior than a traditional warehouse. A traditional warehouse would just have four windows on the corners, concrete all along, another four windows in the back, aesthetically not pleasing compared to what we are proposing. And we think that this helps provide a level of aesthetics that the local- I think locals will- will appreciate. This is facing Oak Bend, so all the truck traffic is in the back of the building. The build- the truck ward is narrow, it's ninety feet to a hundred and twenty feet. Moveability for trucks for the larger eighteen-wheelers will be difficult. Do we know how many? No, we don't. I- I suspect it's probably going to be box trucks, but it could be a couple eighteen-wheelers. These could be single-tenant buildings, they could be diminished down to be eighteen thousand square foot spaces, twenty thousand square foot spaces, which at that point, the traffic goes down even more. These buildings could be sold to local businesses where they own the facilities, and they can do distribution, warehouse, showroom, it's kind of a flexible, kind of, we designed the buildings to be ultra-flexible. I will say this is one of the more highly-designed buildings that- that we have done, we've tried to meet code and be understandable to the- to the area. If there's any questions?
I have a question. I- I do think it looks nice, and I appreciate the explanation of, you know, yes, there's a- there is a large percentage that we're coming down for the brick, but there's- there's a whole lot more glass. Seeing the visual helps me a lot, I will say that. So I do have a question, there is, so there's, you, it looks like you have circulation around the entire building, are the trucks themselves able to come between this, this, what is this, to the west?
This is building on the west side, this would be a fire lane.
And the memory care, so are the trucks going to come that way, or are they going to go more through the center?
They will go more through the center. So this is just the fire loop for the fire department.
Okay, and then, so are there, what operational hours, will there be limits that you will set on the tenants for, you know, when they can operate, you know, they can't be loading at, you know, six AM on a Saturday or something like that, or is that just all city ordinance?
It would be city ordinance.
What would our city ordinance allow?
I'm not sure exactly what the thresholds are, but we do have the noise hours in our nuisance section of the code ordinances that would be applicable.
Okay, and with that, you said that there's going to be a wall kind of extending from on the west side, there would be a wall that was extending kind of toward, that would hide, did you say that there was a wall there?
Yes, a screen wall.
A screen wall.
So behind the building, right next to the transformer, there'll be an eight-foot, a sixty-foot wide concrete wall that is- is shielding the ramp and the dock doors from the western neighbor.
Okay.
As long- as lo- as well as the existing landscape buffer that exists today, that has a bunch of trees and shrubs.
Okay.
And I just wanted to add, there was a question on on-street parking tonight and at P&amp;Z. Part of the request to reduce the open area was in order for us to have two rows of parking in front of each building. The alter- if we were to meet the open area, we could eliminate a whole row of parking in front of the smaller building in order to have open space. The request was to have double parking in order to avoid any on-street parking. I don't foresee any tenants parking on the street, I don't know why they would, there's enough parking in front of the buildings or in the rear of the buildings as needed.
Other questions, comments? I'm not hearing or seeing any, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the additional information. Councilmember Kelly, I think you said you had a couple of closing thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I hate to do this to you, but can we get my drawings back up, please, whoever was doing that? No, not- not, unless you know how to do it, that's awesome, if you can do it. While he's doing that, I do appreciate, thank you so much for the clarity in the explanations, but our tools, our- our city, for reasons we already talked about many times before in previous council meetings, is about fifty percent light industrial. The tools we have to help curb the growth and expansion of distribution warehouses and warehouses are limited. This looks great, I wish it was in a different place, we wouldn't even be having this conversation, but I do like the aesthetics of it. I just don't like the aesthetics of it here, and my tools to try to help keeping, to keep that area from going warehouse are limited. So I don't want to do anything to encourage future warehouse, that's- that's my biggest concern. I do acknowledge that the- the police activity has been out there, but that's a- that's an owner problem, they need to fix that. There's graffiti on there right now, and if we need to get zoning out there, to go out there and cite somebody to get that graffiti covered, then let's do that. I don't think that's something that we should bear the burden of, just because it's- it's an attractive nuisance, that's for the owner to take care of. I also want to say that I really don't want to choose, I- I get that- that it, I'm trying hard not to conflate the two issues, which is, one, this is a question about a zoning variance for brick, and I'm trying hard not to use that as a- as a-
I'm not sure exactly what the thresholds are, but we do have the noise hours in our nuisance section of the code ordinances that would be applicable.
Okay. And with that, you said that there's going to be a wall kind of extending from...on the west side, there would be a wall that was extending kind of toward...that would hide...did you say that there was a wall there?
Yes, a screen wall.
A screen wall.
So, behind the building, right next to the transformer, there'll be an eight-foot, 60-foot-wide concrete wall that is shielding the ramp and the dock doors from the western neighbor.
Okay.
As well as the existing landscape buffer that exists today, that has a bunch of trees and shrubs.
Okay.
And I just wanted to add, there was a question on on-street parking tonight and at P&amp;Z. Part of the request to reduce the open area was in order for us to have two rows of parking in front of each building. The...if we were to meet the open area, we could eliminate a whole row of parking in front of the smaller building in order to have open space. The request was to have double parking in order to avoid any on-street parking. I don't foresee any tenants parking on the street. I don't know why they would. There's enough parking in front of the buildings or in the rear of the buildings as needed.
Other questions? Comments? I'm not hearing or seeing any. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the additional information. Councilmember Kelly, I think you said you had a couple of closing thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I hate to do this to you, but can we get my drawings back up, please? Whoever was doing that? No, not...unless you know how to do it, that's awesome, if you know how to do it. While he's doing that, I do appreciate, thank you so much for the clarity and the explanations. But our tools...our city, for reasons we already talked about many times before in previous council meetings, is about 50% light industrial. The tools we have to help curb the growth and expansion of distribution warehouses and warehouses are limited. This looks great. I wish it was in a different place, we wouldn't even be having this conversation, but I do like the aesthetics of it. I just don't like the aesthetics of it here, and my tools to try to help keeping...to keep that area from going warehouse are limited. So, I don't want to do anything to encourage future warehouse. That's my biggest concern. I do acknowledge that the police activity has been out there, but that's a owner problem. They need to fix that. There's graffiti on there right now, and if we need to get zoning out there, to go out there and cite somebody to get that graffiti covered, then let's do that. I don't think that's something that we should bear the burden of, just because it's an attractive nuisance, that's for the owner to take care of. I also want to say that I really don't want to choose...I get that...I'm trying hard not to conflate the two issues, which is, one, this is a question about a zoning variance for brick, and I'm trying hard not to use that as a...this platform to go in and just rail against warehouses in general. But again, like I said before, our tools to limit expansion of warehouses in this area are limited, and this is an opportunity we can go through and just not encourage that development. What I don't want to see happen is, you know, two months from now, somebody wants to put a warehouse up where the pet supply place is, where the pet spa is, say, "Well, it's conforming, because we already have warehouses over there, therefore, we're going to get more." So, my fear is this is a first of many, because of the way the market's shifting right now. Anything that's...I'll just end with that. So, it turns out I didn't need that. Thank you so much. All right.
Can I?
Councilmember Green?
So, I get what you're saying. Unfortunately, with the use, whether it's conforming or not, it's allowed by right with that...within that zoning. My question, and I don't know if the math has been done on this, but when I see the facade here, I see a whole lot of glass, kind of higher-end materials. If we vote this down, could they replace all of that with just straight brick and meet our ordinance?
Yes, they could remove the windows, and actually, the building, Building 1 to the west, which is 68,000 square feet, would only be required to have 15% brickstone on the front. Typically, these type of buildings, you know, bunch them up in the corners, and the rest is, you know, usually concrete tilt wall. But then the smaller building, the 37,000 square foot building on the eastern side of the site, then would be required to be 80% brick. And without...really, there's no other requirements for articulation or any type of design. It's just a material requirement, so.
So, what I'm hearing you say is that if we don't approve what I believe to be, after seeing the picture of it, that helps...very helpful, that's a very upgraded facade. I don't want to disapprove that and then end up getting something lesser than, because quite frankly, even if we disapprove this and it goes away, someone else is coming in too, and they're not going to be as willing...maybe they will be as willing to work with us, but maybe they won't. That's a gamble. So, I understand what you're saying, and I share that sentiment. I don't want to see the city full of warehouse. I don't want to see all this LI-zoned property go to a distribution warehouse. I don't want that. I know the citizens of Lewisville don't want that. However, can I stop it with this vote? I can stop this particular facade, but then I can get one that's way less desirable.
One that looks like a distribution.
One that looks like a distribution warehouse. So, it doesn't seem like there's...that doesn't seem like a very attractive option. This...I could get on board with this. I could get on board with it. I'll just leave it at that.
So, one more comment. Thank you for those comments. Appreciate that. I would submit that it's not in any developer's best interest to build a spite warehouse out of all brick to make it ugly, just because it got voted down. I think they'd still do their best to make this attractive, so I'm not concerned about a spite building going up.
I'm not necessarily suggesting that this developer would do that. I've just...what I would be...what I'm saying is that if...because this developer does not own this property, right?
Though we own it.
Oh, you do own it? Okay. Well, they could sell it to somebody else and say...they could say, "Oh, we don't want to mess with it. Let's sell it to somebody else," who would...so, not necessarily out of spite, just it may be something, if we're getting something that it doesn't meet the letter of our overlay district specifications, but it seems like kind of an upgrade to me.
Yeah. For me, the tipping point in all this is that, to me, it looks like the developer has looked at all sides of this property. Okay, I got the one...you know, I got the memory care on the left side. I've got the pet place on this side. I've got the flood plain on this side. I've got the front...sorry, the front facade on the one side. They've upgraded. To me, it truly looks like an office building. To me also, to me, the main tipping point is, it's just like the mayor said, is if the warehouse distribution goes out of favor, this easily gets transformed into an office building or retail. That, to me, is the biggest tipping point.
Other comments? If there are no other comments, I think we've exhausted this conversation, and I appreciate everybody for their insight and their time. These are always challenging decisions and conversations to have. I appreciate everybody's involvement in that. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Well, no, everybody just vote. I forgot we had the voting system there for a minute. So, we have...the motion passes five to one. And thank you, counsel. Much obliged. Thank you, folks. Item 13, consideration of declaring a vacancy exists on the Animal Services Advisory Committee and consideration of appointment to place number four on the Animal Services Advisory Committee. Historically, place number four on the Animal Services Advisory Committee has been filled by the Animal Services Administrator due to the position being vacant. As of December 16, 2024, place number four is also vacant. Danny Alcantara is the Animal Services Field Supervisor and would meet the requirements to serve in place number four on this committee. It's recommended that the City Council declare a vacancy exists and consider the appointment of Animal Services Field Supervisor Danny Alcantara to the Animal Services Advisory Committee as set forth in the caption above. Counsel? Conversation or a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion, but I don't need that name again.
That'll be Danny Alcantara.
Danny Alcantara. Motion to declare a vacancy exists on Animal Services Advisory Committee and appoint Danny Alcantara?
Alcantara.
Alcantara to place number four on the Animal Services Advisory Committee.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Thank you so much, Danny, for taking on that responsibility. Item H, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. You know, I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Meredith.
Yes, Mayor, I have some library activities for the week. Advice for your device drop-in for adults, Tuesday, January 7, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Small conference room. No registration is required. Leche y galetas for all ages, Tuesday, January 7, 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Bennett Program Room. A ticket is required. Make Your Own Mocktails for adults, Tuesday, January 7, 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Crawford Meeting Room. Registration is required. And Elementary Explorations for children age 68, Thursday, January 9, 4:30 to 5:30. The Bennett Program Room. A ticket is required. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Torrey?
Yes. I have a number of items from the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances, Black Box Songwriter Series, The Traveling Red River Songwriters, presented by the City of Lewisville on January 18, and Into the Woods, presented by the Outcry Youth Theater, January 23 through 26, with two performances on January 25 and 26. And as always, Friday nights, the acoustic jam session going on, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, 6 to 9. And activities, we have an art talk, Randall Garrett, In Search of a Character and a Story, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on January 14. And two exhibitions right now, 2025 for artists exhibition, Nam, Bruno, Lee &amp; Lee, presented by the City of Lewisville through March 4, and Strictly Abstract Exhibition, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, January 11 through February 1. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary? Richard? All right. Here we go.
Lake level 89% at 519.65 feet.
All right.
I wanted to mention, first off, I want to thank Mayor, Councilman Meredith, and Councilman Jones for joining our inspection of the public safety facility. For those of you who have not done that yet, just a reminder, if you want to, you can come along with us on Friday mornings at 10:00 AM. Just coordinate with Melissa if you're going to attend, so we don't have a quarrel.
Thank you. Chief? Chief? Councilmember Kelly?
So, just a couple of quick things. So, one, it's more of acknowledgement. So, where's James? If you haven't signed up for any James walking tours yet, please do. There's several throughout the year. I've been on a couple of these things. They're really good. They give great insight into the history of Lewisville. I know James gets to kick out of it. I think I learn something every time I go out, something a little bit new, so I appreciate that. And then, two, I want to issue a challenge to our residents in Lewisville. And think about, are you living in the city or existing in the city? Go out there, try to do something in the city. Look at a calendar. Go on a...did a Great Nature Walk at Thrive? And we live in the city, don't just exist in the city. So, that's a challenge out there, too, to maybe some of our Facebook friends that are... that like to post quite a bit.
Well, I just wanted to say, Happy New Year. This is...you know, we have been talking about 2025 for...I've spent the last decade of my life talking about 2025. So, you know, New Year's Eve, when the ball drops in 2025, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, it is 2025. This is very exciting." We have been looking forward to this year for a really long time. We have a whole lot of...a whole lot of exciting things that are going to be happening this year. I believe that we have a website for the Centennial. What is the website again, James?
LewisvilleTX100.com.
So, that will be all sorts of information about the city itself, but also upcoming events. I did want to mention one that we have that's active right now. We have four rotating exhibits that are going to be rotating throughout the whole year, I believe, right, James? So, there's going to be an exhibit here in City Hall. There's one at the library, one at the mall, and the other one is Thrive. So, and those will be rotating...I guess they'll be rotating once a quarter, since there's four of them. So, go check those out, learning some things about the history of Lewisville over the last 100 years. I love that sort of stuff, so hopefully you do, too. But again, to Patrick's point, that's part of, you know, living here, embracing it, and her heritage, and becoming part of something that's bigger than yourself. So, with that, that's all I have.
All right. I want to thank Jim for the two of the public safety building. It is looking awesome. I think there should be a competition between...well, no, the fire chief already won, between the directional understanding of the building, because it is challenging, but it is a great-looking building, and Jim is sticking to those contractors, making sure they get stuff done correctly. So, I appreciate that. Speaking of the 100-year anniversary, January 15 will mark our incorporation...January 15, I'm sorry. You can come out to mark that day at the...oh, goodness, I'm losing my place here. Where is it? Wayne Ferguson Plaza. Come check it out and celebrate with us. One thing, point of personal privilege, I'll abuse that really quickly, because it's not correct the way I'm doing it. I'm just saying for all those junkies. My fraternity celebrates its 114th year of existence, Cap Alpha Society fraternity. I'll have 25 years in April, so I just want to give a shout out to all my brothers of Cap Alpha Society. That's all I have.
Councilmember Cade?
I just want to remind everybody, don't buy, go adopt. We have lots of furry critters out there that just want to give you lots of love. So, don't buy, go adopt. I am...I just want to thank staff. This is an exciting year, and it is building up. James, you've done...you've put your heart and soul into this Centennial. Bravo to you. And everyone that you're leading in this process is very exciting. There's lots of people that I recognize so far. And I just want to give condolences and love and prayers out to the family member that the City of Lewisville lost. Grady Jones, and to let his family know that we are with him in spirit. That's it.
First of all, I just want to say that I'm thankful to all the laptops that have Centennial stickers that I'm looking at. I think that's really awesome. For those of you who don't, you got an opportunity. No, it's very excited. Happy birthday, since we won't be having a council meeting before our January 15 date. So, happy birthday, Lewisville. Very excited about all the things that we have coming this year. And of course, with 2025 comes the rework of the 2025 plan, so we're very excited to see that get momentum. If you're a resident out there looking for a way to get involved and wanting to have input, that will be another opportunity this year to get plugged into that process as it continues to move forward. I want to remind everybody that Texas's winter is coming, and so for those of you who are...
Accumulation.
Yeah. They're expecting some sort of accumulation. All I know is that Texas is much like Game of Thrones. When the winter comes, it comes very hard for a few days. So, please, stay safe, keep tabs on your neighbors. If the power does fail in your neighborhood, please double down on checking on your neighbors and staying warm. City staff, we have warming...two warming facilities available. You can go to the city website and check that out. But city staff, and of course, our police and fire are there to keep you all safe. So, stay off the roads when it comes. I don't care how well you think you can drive. It gets pretty ugly out there if you're new to North Texas in this weather. With that, we do have an item for a closed session. So, in accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D, tabled item, Section 551.074 personnel, City Secretary Thomas Harris III, and Section 551.071 consultation with attorney on this item. That, I think, is all we have available for closed session, so we're going to break into that. It's 8:47. We're going to reconvene into regular session. Counsel, is there any action to be taken?
Mayor, I move to terminate the City Secretary, Thomas Harris III, and authorize the City Manager and City Attorney to effectuate the severance as provided in his employment agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Council, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. As there is no other action to be taken on tonight's council agenda, we stand adjourned.